Ladies and gentlemen, I will call tonight the exception of the fourth meeting of the Franklin Town Council to order. Our first order of business is our pledge of allegiance by our Vice Mayor, Patty Aigle.
Let's pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item of business is the approval of the November the 6th and November the 28th Town Council minutes. Has everybody had a chance to read those? If so, I'll call for a motion to adopt as presented.
Oh, sorry.
I'll say it. Okay. All in favor? Good. All right. Ms. Aigle, it's now time for kind of a little... There are moments here for us. We're gonna say thank you for all your wonderful service, and we hope you won't be a stranger. Thank you. You did a good one. The comments?
Sad day.
It is.
So, we're happy for you.
Absolutely. Thanks for your work. It's been a pleasure with us. Thank you. The next item of business will be the oath of office for the mayor and Town Council members, and I think the first one will be Mr. Culpepper. Mr. Perry, we appreciate very much you being here tonight. Mr. Perry's first question.
Glad to be here. Say aye and state your name.
Aye, David Benjamin Culpepper.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly and sincerely affirm.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the State of North Carolina.
To the State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities which are or may be established.
And the authorities.
Which are.
Which are and may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Say aye and state your name.
Aye, David Benjamin Culpepper.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will truly and honestly.
That I will truly and honestly.
Demine myself.
Demine myself.
In the office of council member of the town of Franklin.
In the office of council member of the town of Franklin.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Culpepper, go take your seat.
Thank you.
This is the last time I'll ever pull a chair out.
And so, I stand.
Aye, Barbara McRae.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Say aye and state your name.
Aye, Barbara McRae.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the State of North Carolina.
To the State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities which are or may be established.
And authorities which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And I will endeavor to support.
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Say aye and state your name.
Aye, David Benjamin Culpepper.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will truly and honestly.
That I will truly and honestly.
Demine myself.
Demine myself.
In the office of council member of the town of Franklin.
In the office of council member of the town of Franklin.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Say aye and state your name.
Aye, Barbara McRae.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will truly and honestly.
That I will truly and honestly.
Demine myself.
Demine myself.
In the office of mayor of the town of Franklin.
In the office of mayor of the town of Franklin.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, sir. The mayor? Sir. Say aye and state your name.
Aye, Bob Scott.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye and state your name.
Aye, Bob Scott.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the State of North Carolina.
To the State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities which are or may be established.
And authorities which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And I will endeavor to support.
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Say aye and state your name.
Aye, Barbara McRae.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will truly and honestly.
That I will truly and honestly.
Demine myself.
Demine myself.
In the office of mayor of the town of Franklin.
In the office of mayor of the town of Franklin.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Say aye and state your name.
Aye, Bob Scott.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will truly and honestly.
That I will truly and honestly.
Demine myself.
Demine myself.
In the office of council member of the town of Franklin.
In the office of council member of the town of Franklin.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Say aye and state your name.
Aye, Barbara McRae.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will truly and honestly.
That I will truly and honestly.
Demine myself.
Demine myself.
In the office of mayor of the town of Franklin.
In the office of mayor of the town of Franklin.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Culpepper, go take your seat.
Thank you.
This is the last time I'll ever pull a chair out. And so, I stand. And so, I stand. Say aye and state your name.
Aye, Barbara McRae.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye and state your name.
Aye, Barbara McRae.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the State of North Carolina.
To the State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities which are or may be established.
And authorities which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And I will endeavor to support.
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Say aye and state your name.
Aye, Barbara McRae.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye and state your name.
Aye, Barbara McRae.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the State of North Carolina.
To the State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities which are or may be established.
And authorities which are or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And I will endeavor to support.
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Say aye and state your name.
Aye, Barbara McRae.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will truly and honestly.
That I will truly and honestly.
Demine myself.
Demine myself.
In the office of mayor of the town of Franklin.
In the office of mayor of the town of Franklin.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulation.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item of business is the appointment of the mayor pro tempore. As it's also known as the vice mayor, do I have a nomination for vice mayor?
I'd be more than proud to put the name of Barbara McRae.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any further nominations? All in favor of Ms. McRae being the vice mayor signify by raising your hand. All right. Congratulations. Okay. Madam ma'am.
We need to adopt the agenda.
We do. I'm sorry.
I don't think we adopt the agenda.
Okay. Adopt the agenda's presentation. Does anybody have any changes or anything they'd like to add to the agenda for tonight? None being... Yes, would I?
Mr. Mayor, did you want to bring up the resolution?
Oh, yes. Yes. I apologize. I do have a resolution regarding the deferred maintenance needs in the American's park system and primarily about the... We've been asked to adopt a resolution concerning deferred maintenance in the smoke use and how much the smoke is needed in this area. Would there be any objections to adding that to the agenda?
Yes.
Mm-hmm? Yes, gee. So, your motion to adjourn?
I would surrender.
Second?
Right.
Okay. All in favor? All right. Madam ma'am, does anybody signed up for the public session?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Derrick. W H Derrick. You're signed up for the public session, sir.
Yes, you're only coming fast because here.
Uh, yeah, come on up if you would.
Oh, why didn't you notice?
And I remind everyone again that I'm timing it five minutes. Okay, sir.
Well, I got two subjects up to five minutes each.
I guess if you need that much time, if it's two entirely separate subjects.
No, these are short. Uh, this is something I don't know if you people can do anything about it tonight, but this is what happened to me and my wife and niece and myself last week. We went into one of the apparel shops in Franklin on Main Street that... My wife goes over and gets about $200 worth of clothes. I'm looking at about three or four nice sweaters. She goes up there to pay, and won't take the check. And I know that you can have it, you can be refused, but you're gonna do that. But if I look cash register saying that, I put it on your door. I don't know if you people can do anything about it, but you know, that's a little... That's not right. To walk in, pick out what you want, get ready to go, and over came and takes the check. Anything you people can do about it, just talk to these people.
I see one thing I think possibly I could do. I am the representative to the main street of the streets of Franklin group, and I can bring that up to them to ask their members to do that.
Well, it shouldn't, you know, have to be something to be. You're gonna spite it when you go in. No checks. Okay, little little ditty. This is the knowledge. You think we've been working on a knowledge agenda for a long time, and I've never seen any results. As I've said before, you can go to silver, any time of the day, any time at night. You don't hear that. You can do the same thing in silver. I mean, in clay. Why can't you people do something about it?
Actually, we have that on the agenda tonight, sir.
Oh, well, that's why I'm speaking. I'm trying to push you into it, but really, you've been on this dial for a long time, and nothing's ever happened.
It's number 10 on the legal. We will be discussing that, sir.
Okay, Mr. Aigle. Both of you are pretty good. You need boys and girls? Congratulations. Good to see you girls. Oh, that was the last one. Oh, yeah, Bob. Excuse me.
All right. Mr. Ledford. Mr. Jimbo Ledford.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me here tonight. I'm here tonight representing DePaco. It's a little follow-up. It seemed like some of the members of the board were curious to hear a little bit more. I'd like to share with you what we've been working on so far. Put a couple packets together. I'll keep this really short. Some of the questions were in the business. I've included our articles in incorporation. Louis DePaco. I've included some of the information on us right here. Myself, some of the projects we've worked on right here in Franklin. And we're living this very town hall. We got an insurance quote from Jem Garner here at Y Insurance. It's a well lower budget. Property cleanup. I spoke with several more contractors in the area. Neil Owens, Bobby Bates, Derek Scott. And they all said that we're in ballpark. We've not been upset with the property. There's some trespassing signs are backed up. There was a question of urgency. We did, we were trying to show some urgency with calling a screen token and hoping for 2018, but it was just an idea to try to get ball moving. We thought of other ideas, such as the town of Franklin presents summer's fest. Have we spoken private and surprise? Yes. We're currently working with P. Bodenheimer with some property he had running in Riverwalk District on an idea we're calling Follow Palooza. Does this fit Franklin's vision? Yeah. We put together a petition online and door-to-door, and so far we have 400 signatures that state that this clearly follows their vision for the town of Franklin. There's more than people that voted in the last election, so I think it's something that the town should at least address. It clearly says, "We, the countryside residents, blah, blah, blah," urge everybody in authority in the town of Franklin to support this shared vision for the town of Franklin. So, I was unable to find a written vision for the town of Franklin anywhere else in the documentation, so I don't know. I have a couple packets that we put together. I would love to post it in, if that's okay. Am I allowed in this courtroom? I almost forgot. Most importantly, Miss McRae, can I use my T-shirt for you, sir? Brandon?
Chinese.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Moore. Angela Moore.
Good evening. I have a couple of things I'd like to address. Firstly, I know that the board faces the daunting task of filling the vacant seat. And for those of you I haven't been able to get in touch with, I do want to let you know that I am very interested in that seat. And there is a lot of support from people who both agree with my politics and disagree with my politics for me because the election was so close and I was the next vote getter. I do know that the state allows you to appoint anyone that is eligible for the position, but I also know that the laws are very apparent that the ideal is to elect a position and not appoint it. So, I would just ask for your consideration, not for me, but for the electorate, for the people who are coming out and voting, the people we want to continue to vote, just for the numbers, for showing up. So, that being said, there are a few things on the agenda tonight that I wanted to bring up, particularly the lighting issues that I think are on the agenda. I don't think there's gonna be any public hearing about this. I have not heard the presentation on this, simply because I won't be able to speak after the presentation is done. But from the little bit that was available through the press packet, I do have some concerns. If you look at the map of the area that is going to be lit, only one side of the road is actually in the town limits. The other side is primarily the graveyard. And so, I would just really ask the board to be careful and look at what benefit the town population is going to gain from lighting this area. Is it really truly serving residences because everything that's in the town limits beyond that is commercial? Or, you know, I didn't know possibly it was a public safety issue that maybe lighting this area would allow us to reduce our police force in a meaningful way if it's a high-crime area. I'm not sure exactly what the motivation is there. Like I said, I have not heard the presentation, but the little bit of information that was provided to the public did not give any concrete reason why it would be worth paying over $100 a month indefinitely to light this area. Secondly, I was a little bit concerned for some of the language in the noise ordinance, particularly the general provisions. It's unclear if these would be enforceable or if it's just something to state the intent of the ordinance. It seems like that it could have the potential for abuse, particularly in the case of small groups meeting for anything from birthday parties to church gatherings, anything like that, that could theoretically violate the general provisions without doing something that was truly a disruption to the general public. So, I thank you for your time and for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Is anyone else? That's all the people I have signed up for the public session. Under new business, I wanted to talk about, as we began another two years on this board, serving the town of Franklin, and I'd ask that you would indulge me and give me just a few minutes to talk about what we have before us. First, let me say that the most valuable thing we have as a town are our wonderful town employees who give so much and go above and beyond to make sure our town remains a wonderful, safe place to live and visit. We owe so much to these employees. Also, I would like to remind the board about a logo on one of our nation's national newspapers, and that is that it is that democracy dies in darkness. I'm so very proud that this board has had very few closed meetings in the past four years, and I would encourage the board to always find reasons not to go behind closed doors, but find reasons to conduct our business before the public. As such, I will work to see that the town adheres to the North Line of Open Meetings and Public Record laws. We, as a board, exist to conduct the public's business, and in that vein, I would remind you of the high ethical standards the public demands of us. I am concerned about the status of our Angel Medical Center, and they're looking at a potential site for replacement facility. I welcome this, but at the same time, I'm still not clear on what may happen with the old facility. Mission Health has closed our labor delivery unit in this time. I'm worried about the future of our medical care, as this is another example of what is happening nationally to health care at the expense of small communities such as ours. Parking. We will be diligently practicing and studying to come up with a new parking plan for Main Street, or we may decide that the present system is volatile. I do believe that we must look to enforcing careless parking and parking of large wheel-based vehicles on Main. Deciding on the best use of the Whitmire property is also one of those things high on our list of things to decide. Cities and towns continue to have philosophical differences with the North Carolina legislature in Washington. Financial help from both is in decline. On the state level, we have seen our right to involuntary annexation taken away, water and sewer systems, and airports threatened, and a move to make municipal elections partisan. At present, most of the towns and cities are nonpartisan, and this relieves us of having to make decisions based on party affiliations. Also, we are seeing impacts on our power bill funds, which is how we maintain streets and sidewalks. We have lost the ability to charge privileged licenses, and we could be seeing far-reaching consequences on state and national cutbacks in funding for general and human services. In Washington, there is a move to revoke the Johnson Amendment, which would allow nonprofits and religious organizations to enter into the political arena without losing their tax-exempt status. This could have a far-reaching effect on our nonprofit funding pool to the extent that we might look at doing away with it if the amendment is revoked. We'll probably be faced with looking at a tax increase to work at getting rid of a backlog of deferred maintenance, and I would hope that we would look hard at the one quarter to one-half cent sales tax increase which cities and towns are authorized to implement. To maintain our current level of fire service, we will likely have to ask for a two- or three-cent increase in the fire tax if the board decides it's necessary. At the moment, we have no idea what effect the county's new fire task force is going to have on the Franklin Fire Department. Our many festivals continue to be a driving force for increased sales tax revenues, which benefits the town as well as the county. We've experienced increased numbers of people visiting Franklin as a result of the eclipse, which was estimated to draw 10,000 people to town. We had the largest pumpkin fest in Winter Wonderland, and our Veterans Day is still getting accolades for what the town did. I hope this board will adopt a noise nuisance ordinance tonight, or at least by the January meeting. In January, I'd like to hold a special meeting to talk about our visions for Franklin and work toward a strategic plan for Franklin moving forward. I urge all board members to take advantage of the school of government and North Carolina League of Municipalities training, seminars, and conferences. I urge each of you to begin working toward the different classification levels in the local collective leaders academy. Finally, I want to thank each one of you for working diligently for Franklin, and I don't mean to be so blunt, but we do have some very tough issues that we'll be facing as a board in the future. Any board member want to say anything? If not, we'll move on. Thank you for your time. Okay. The streetlights along Slum Road. Our town engineer, Mr. Nathaniel Moore, you're ready. You're up, sir.
Hey, Mr. Ringard Councilman May as well, in Justin's absence tonight. This is a project we've been looking at off and on for a couple of years now because those parcels are annexed in the town, which were within our jurisdiction. There's a lot of commercial businesses that expressed an interest in getting those lit for their customers that approach that way, and also it's a public safety issue in some aspects. So, with that, I'll turn that over to Mr. Moore.
Good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
We were approached about looking at lighting on Slum Road, and so we set up a big power to come out with a lighting plan for Slum Road, and we did a... They did a lighting study for us and found that we could install five 70-watt LEDs at that location, and that's gonna be primarily around the US 64 intersection.
But in the same time, I'm still not clear on what may happen with the old facility. Mission Health has closed our labor and delivery unit in this time. I'm worried about the future of our medical care as this is another example of what is happening nationally to health care at the expense of small communities such as ours. Parking. We will be diligently practicing and studying to come up with a new parking plan for Main Street, or we may decide that the present system is volatile. I do believe that we must look to enforcing careless parking and parking of large wheel-based vehicles on Main. Deciding on the best use of the Whitmire property is also one of those things high on our list of things to decide. Cities and towns continue to have philosophical differences with the North Carolina Legislature in Washington. Financial help from both is in decline. On the state level, we have seen our right to involuntary annexation taken away, water and sewer systems and airports threatened, and a move to make municipal elections partisan. At present, most of the towns and cities are nonpartisan, and this relieves us of having to make decisions based on party affiliations. Also, we are seeing impacts on our power bill funds, which is how we maintain streets and sidewalks. We have lost the ability to charge privileged licenses, and we could be seeing far-reaching consequences on state and national cutbacks in funding for general and human services. In Washington, there is a move to revoke the Johnson Amendment, which would allow nonprofits and religious organizations to enter into the political arena without losing their tax-exempt status. This could have a far-reaching effect on our nonprofit funding pool to the extent that we might look at doing away with it if the amendment is revoked. We'll probably be faced with looking at a tax increase to work at getting rid of a backlog of deferred maintenance, and I would hope that we would look hard at the one quarter to one-half cent sales tax increase which cities and towns are authorized to implement. To maintain our current level of fire service, we will likely have to ask for a two- or three-cent increase in the fire tax if the board decides it's necessary. At the moment, we have no idea of what effect the town's new fire task force is going to have on the Franklin Fire Department. Our many festivals continue to be a driving force for increased sales tax revenues, which benefits the town as well as the county. We've experienced increased numbers of people visiting Franklin as a result of the eclipse, which was estimated to draw 10,000 people to town. We had the largest pumpkin fest in winter wonderlands, and our Veterans Day is still getting accolades for what the town did. I hope this board will adopt a noise nuisance ordinance tonight, or at least by the January meeting. In January, I'd like to hold a special meeting to talk about our visions for Franklin and work toward a strategic plan for Franklin moving forward. I urge all board members to take advantage of the school of government and North Carolina League of Municipalities training, seminars, and conferences. I urge each of you to begin working towards the different classification levels in the local collective leaders academy. Finally, I want to thank each one of you for working diligently for Franklin, and I don't mean to be so blunt, but we do have some very tough issues that we'll be facing this board in the future. Any board member want to say anything? If not, we'll move on. Thank you for your time. Okay, the streetlights along Slum Road. Our town engineer, Mr. Nathaniel Moore, you're ready, you're up, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman May as well, in Justin's absence tonight. This is a project we've been looking at off and on for a couple of years now because those parcels are annexed in the town, which were within our jurisdiction. There's a lot of commercial businesses that expressed an interest in getting those lit for their customers that approach that way, and also it's a public safety issue in some aspects. So with that, I'll turn that over to Mr. Moore.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
We were approached about looking at lighting on Slum Road, and so we said we'd get up with Duke Power to come out with a lighting plan for Slum Road, and we did a, they did a lighting study for us and found that we could install five 70-watt LEDs at that location, and that's going to be primarily around the US 64 intersection. The other side of the road is more residential, and we felt like that the added light on that section would not be wanted, and where the businesses are where we can light that section of roadway. The other benefit is we reached out to NC DOT, and because we were going to look into lighting that section, they are in the process of lighting the parking lot as well at that location. While we were out there, currently, our streetlight is soft at Palmer Drive, and we looked at an option to light from Palmer Drive to Slum Road, and that would include 14 streetlights that would be on the existing poles out there, so some will be on the right side and left side of the road. It's a lot cheaper than having to set a new pole just for a streetlight and use the empty trucker that's already there. I broke down some monthly costs and yearly costs in your old packet, and we can look to do one or both sections.
Anything else you'd like to answer?
That's it?
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, are there any discussion from the board? Yes, let's go back.
That's the work they're doing across from the bay yard right now today? Is that where we're talking about putting some on the old Murphy Road between Palmer and Slum Road?
That, that section of roadway, but that is for a new transmission line that's in there.
Okay. I think so, that, um, first thing, they were taking some trees down. I saw that today, but that is where we're talking about putting poles along through there?
Yeah, basically from radio to Slum Road is where our current streetlight is stopped at Palmer Drive right now, so. That section of roadway is dark, you have the board education, you have the cemetery there, or the minimal cost of that, it wouldn't light that up and add some value to it now.
Are we considering placement of the poles for far enough off the roadway for future sidewalk improvements and that type of thing, to where we wouldn't have to be moving these poles again five years down the road?
Currently, Duke Power does a lighting study, and they use their pole locations. All we do is pay a monthly fee for the light on their pole structures.
Okay.
So this goes on existing?
Yep.
Any other questions?
I see a lot of pedestrians in that section, I think it really isn't for you.
Yeah, there's very little shoulder in those sections of roadway.
I know it's very anecdotal, but I can tell you that I've had at least three school board meetings interrupted by the screeching brakes and cars colliding right outside the building.
Is, is that road on the DOT's radar for pedestrian walkability in the future?
That I'm not aware of, I've not seen it, it's not been in their long-scale plan, but I've seen.
Any other questions?
So these are really separate projects?
Well, we, we can combine them, we looked at it as we can do one or the other, or both, so that's why we want to break it down. Since they are going to lock the parking lot, I feel like that one is, it's a cheap and easy thing to do around the businesses right there.
That's, that's where we started in there, on Slum Road, and then just looked at Slum Road.
Yeah, we went on ahead and looked, we made a whole corridor of lighted sections in there, basically.
But there's no economies of scale to do both at the same time, really.
We, we can do both.
But you don't save any money?
No, no, it is a set price, whether you want to do one or a thousand.
The biggest concern, Mr. Mayor and Board, was specifically the Slum Road area with the commercial businesses. As Mr. Moore alluded when we were looking at that, we tried to look at a connection through town, so this is definitely two options or one option, it's just up to the board. But the biggest concern from the town administrations in was Slum Road, which we've gotten so many complaints from business owners. I think we should do them both.
Okay, would I put that, all the questions, now, we got any other questions, Mr. Moore?
But this, oh, Stewie. This is the total cost to the town per year for each project?
Yes. Any further questions? Mr. Craig, would you like to put that?
I think that we do both these projects.
Second, three.
All in favor? Okay, Mr. Moore. Okay, the DOT Transportation Improvement Project Agreement, Madam Manager, you're going to present that for us.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Board, once you have reported it on your, in the packet, is an agreement from NC DOT regarding the roundabouts that will be constructed inside the city limits. It's basically an agreement that the town does have to agree to for the NC DOT to come in hand, move, or replace any utilities which they have agreed to do.
All right, any questions of the manager? Any board member have any comments? All right, if not, I'll move to, I'll entertain a motion as presented. Second?
What's that?
All in favor? All right, Franklin Fire and Rescue Strategic Plan, Madam Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Board, our apologies that Chief Moore couldn't be here tonight, he had planned a vacation, and certainly didn't want him to miss that, but he's been working on for a few months now a strategic plan for Franklin Fire and Rescue that looks 10 years down the road, so that would take us to 2027, and it just looks at some of the apparatus that we'll need to replace, it looks at our current debt, and it just gives Franklin a model to kind of start basing off of, and of course, this can be modified during time, but it's a start for a strategic plan.
So basically, what we need tonight is a motion to approve the strategic plan?
Yes, sir.
For Franklin Fire Department. Any discussion from the board? None, I'll entertain a motion to approve, Mr. Craig. Second?
Yes, yes.
Second, all in favor? All right, approval of the 2018 Town Council Regular Meeting Schedule, Madam, Madam Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Board, what you have before you tonight in your packet is your proposed monthly meeting schedule for 2018. It's currently set on the first Monday at 7:00 p.m.
There was a question, there was a question, Mr. Madam, wants to bring something up?
Yes, I wanted to gauge the will of the board on holding our meetings at 6:00 p.m. No reason other than inconvenience, you know, it's, all the other boards in town, Board of Education, County Commissioners, they all meet at 6:00 p.m., and it, I don't know, the, the staff has to, they'll have to, but I think they dip the weight around from 5:00 to 7:00, and we'd have to come back, you know, get home on the way. This was engaged, the, how the, how the board felt about meeting at 6:00 p.m. instead of 7:00 p.m.
What would it feel about that? I think all it would take would be a motion and a vote, not a council.
Yes, sir, I think the, the day, your day of the month is set in the, in the charter, but the time is specified.
I agree, I think 7:00 is a very strange time to start a meeting. I mean, that's what I usually eat, so I either have to eat at 5:00 or I'm going to eat at 9:00.
You got a point, you have a real good point, okay. Well, would someone like to make a motion to change our meeting time to 6:00 p.m.?
Then you got to even.
I bet Brad would.
I said, would anybody like?
I would be happy to make the motion, I just wondered if anybody had anything to do.
Make the motion, let's see how it plays out.
I would like to make the motion to move our regularly scheduled council meetings to 6:00 p.m. rather than 7:00. And approve the calendar updates.
Is there a second? Second, all in favor? Okay.
You're setting it to 7:00.
I'm late, you know why?
Oh, are you against this?
You wouldn't have run if you had known this.
We threw the curveball, didn't we, Mr. Moore? Okay, approval of the 2018 Town of Franklin Holiday Schedule, Madam Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Board, what you have reported in your package tonight, the town has always followed the state holiday schedule, so what you see before you tonight is just what the state holiday schedule would look like for the year 2018, and we're just asking that you would present, accept, adopt that as present tonight.
I'd like to make the motion that we accept this holiday schedule.
Have a motion and second? Second, okay, all in favor? All right, the next is a resolution regarding the deferred maintenance needs in America's parks. I guess I'm going to read this, Madam Manager and Councilor. Okay, this is, this was brought to me last week by representatives of the Pew Charitable Foundation, and they're going around national, it's, it's a national movement about trying to get some of our national parks and public lands up for par. And so, whereas America's National Park System is a living testimony, testament to our citizens' valor, our nation's hardships, our victories, and our traditions as Americans, and has been called America's Best Idea, and whereas the National Park System preserves the diversity, culture, and heritage of all Americans, and serves as a living classroom for future generations, and whereas in 2016, the National Park Service celebrated its centennial and currently manages more than 400 nationally significant sites and an invaluable collection of more than 75,000 natural and cultural assets that span 84 million acres across all 50 states, the District of Columbia, and several United States territories and insular, insular areas. And whereas, North Carolina is home to 10 National Park Units, including Cape Hatteras National Seashore, Boars Creek National Battlefield, Great Smoky Nationals, Great Smoky Mountains National Park, and the Blue Ridge Parkway, and I might add, also the Appalachian Trail. Whereas, the Town of Franklin is a gateway community to both the Appalachian National Seating Trail and the Great Smoky Mountains National Park, and benefits from the tourism associated with visitors to these parks and the improved quality of place for residents. And whereas, the National Park Service's mission is to preserve the scenery and the natural and historic objects and the wildlife therein, and to provide for the enjoyment of the same in such manner and by such means as will leave them unimpaired for the enjoyment of future generations. And whereas, in 2016, the National Park System had more than 331 million visits, including 11.3 million in the Great Smoky Mountains National Park. And whereas, in 2016, the National Park Service estimates indicate that park visitors spent more than 942 million in the local communities adjacent to the Great Smoky Mountains National Park and along the Appalachian Trail, supporting an estimated 14,700 jobs. And whereas, the National Park Service has the obligation to preserve our nation's history, promote access to national parks for all citizens, stimulate revenue to sustain itself in nearby communities, educate the public about America's natural, cultural, and historical resources, and provide safe facilities and environments to enjoy these resources. And whereas, in 2016, the National Park Service estimated a deferred maintenance backlog of 11, 11.3 billion, including needed repairs along the Appalachian Trail, and $67 million in the North Carolina portion of Great Smoky Mountains National Park, which consists of repairs to aging historical structures, trails, sewers, thousands of miles of roads, bridges, tunnels, and other vital infrastructure. Whereas, it is a responsibility of Congress to maintain America's national parks to ensure our natural places and our history is preserved and documented for future generations, and for the adjacent communities is allowing the direct and indirect economic benefits generated by visits to national park sites. Now therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of the Town of Franklin, that the Town of Franklin urges Congress to create a reliable, predictable stream of resources to address deferred maintenance needs in America's National Park System, and to ensure that federal infrastructure initiatives include provisions to address park maintenance. So, I'll entertain a motion to either adopt or reject this resolution.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion from the board? All in favor? Okay, we'll see the discussion, several cities out here, Asheville, Flat Rock, Webster, Hendersonville have all also adopted this resolution. Okay, the next item is a discussion on the Town of Franklin's ordinance ordinance, Councilor, I'll meet you, you're up, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I supplied to each of a new copy of the ordinance, there was one earlier, one in the agenda packet, make a couple of just minor hypo-changes, and a little bit substantive in the sort of whereas clauses that we'll cover in just a minute, of what I now propose you call the Howl Barrett Noise Control Ordinance to the Town of Franklin. I think it'd be only fitting.
Thank you, Councilor.
Before we get there, I thought it would be useful, I've also given you a little packet of about four pages, just to run very quickly through the statutory basis for the town's ability to regulate this. The first page of that is 168-F174, and we talk about police power ordinances, this is, this is the source of that, of that general ordinance making authority. It's what gives cities the ability to, it says right there, define, prohibit, regulate the Bayd Act conditions that are detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of citizens. So that's, that's a very strong and compelling government interest in anything that you find to be detrimental in that fashion. And on the next page, 168-F194, you're given particular authority to regulate noises that tend to annoy, disturb, or frighten citizens. The next page is 168-F175, enforcement of ordinances, as those of you who are on the board, and we talked through the parking ticket issue a while back, recall, basically had your choice of remedies, if you want to find something as a police power problem you want to address by an ordinance, you can punish violation of that by means of a civil fine, in which case if the town collects it against the people, you can address it, you can make it a misdemeanor, and that's Section B of that statute, says, basically, I think, there was a time when cities were having a hard time enforcing ordinances by means of just civil fines, or having to personally go to court to sue out for enforcement, so they, General Assembly gave them the ability to make it a misdemeanor to violate ordinances. And then the last page there is from board ordinances, the code, that's Section 10.99, we have looked at several times in the past, concerning the general penalty, the way it works is that after the warning citation is given, you have sort of progressive fines for first violation of $25, second violation of $100, and subsequent $200 apiece. And then what is punishable as a misdemeanor according to your general penalty is the failure to pay that penalty. So if civil penalties are not paid by somebody, then, then it can become, the failure to pay becomes a criminal matter, not the, the failure, the violation of the ordinance itself. So with that in mind, we'll turn it back to the ordinance, I have made it, I've made reference to the Section 10.99 as the general penalty for a violation of noise as it's defined here. That first section, 94.52, the A, the general prohibition, is a very thoroughly vetted case of statutory language of ordinance language. I reviewed seven or eight different noise ordinances, I found that to be a common feature of all of them. Several that I picked through and have highlighted some different approaches to things were Waynesville, Silva, Hendersonville. Another feature and something that we've talked about is whether to enforce by means of decimal meters. Justin, I don't know if you sent it to everybody, but Justin found an article a couple of years ago, with Hendersonville stripped out the decimal enforcement method. And looking through that, I, I find that really the more problematic noise ordinances to enforce are those that are based on decimal meter readings. They, they have with them a whole host of problems, was it calibrated right, were you standing close enough, was it, you know, they invite a whole lot of questions where, you know, a sort of a general statement that noises that are unreasonably loud disturbing and frightening, as experienced by a law enforcement officer who will go and make sure that that's what they perceive to be there, and is driven by a complaint presumably from somebody in the vicinity, is enforceable. There's been case law on this, there was a, there was a court of appeals case in North Carolina that said that that's not unconstitutional abad, it is enforceable to say, you know, it's not lawful to make it unreasonably loud disturbing or frightening because people have a common ability to apprehend things and know what kind of standard is being enforced on. So the courts have, have supported this kind of language, that's also been true at the federal level, there's a Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals case that said you have to steer from your abad language like unnecessary, that was a court of case that, so on the federal level strikes down, and look there on the wall, using the term unnecessary noise, that's part of know what that means, but, but the rest of this language is thoroughly vetted. So you start with that general prohibition, and then I, I really think the specific prohibitions are just an order, examples, examples of things that, A, the general prohibition is meant to prohibit. And it's mostly time-driven as well, I mean, I think that's, that's another key to having an enforceable ordinance, and it's part of what I added to the front page there, in your whereas clauses, I've sought to say, the town has looked at this, this is George, this is Mr. Derrick, remind us, we've been looking at this for a while, we've looked at other enforcement mechanisms, and so on this one is the most reasonable way you can, you can get at an important government interest. Having said that, procedurally, since it is police power, you're not required to have any kind of a public hearing, I guess the one problem, and it wouldn't be in a position for you to adopt an ordinance if it's not considered entirely, there were no objections tonight, there are some options here, so I don't know if you're ready to, to adopt it tonight or not. I hope you all had time to read it, have any impressions?
Impressions, Congress, you have more?
I'm okay.
Yes, go ahead, Robert.
You mentioned the civil penalties and the cost, so if you, if you do it the way you described, where it becomes a misdemeanor, if they don't, so they, it's sort of like voluntary compliance, but they just get, they just define, and they pay it, then it doesn't require a lot of, of, upfront, kind of, on our part?
Correct. I think if somebody, they're, they're civil because they're collectible in the nature of the debt, so, you know, theoretically, to have somebody rack up $10,000 worth of these and be worked on to pursue it at that point, you wouldn't be obligated to, but you would probably also start to think about getting the, as it gets enforced, to actually get some fees.
This also gives, gives our police something to go by, which I don't believe, Chief, you have anything really to stand on, you go to? Other than verbal, pardon? Other than verbal warning? Verbal warning, yeah.
And it's officer judgment?
Yes.
Entirely?
Reasonable person is.
Well, so what's, again, what the courts have said is, reasonable person is able to understand what refraining from making noises that are, yeah, unreasonably loud disturbing or frightening, the prosecution of it then, or, or, you know, the, the levying of the penalty will be on the basis of what an officer.
But I mean, if there's a noise complaint, they're to call the town police, the officer will go, use his judgment, if it's unruly, he will issue a citation, or maybe some warning first, probably.
Yes, that's my, that would, I think would be the way to do it. I, I will tell you that I, I ran across an article, and I forget which municipality it was, where they, there was some challenge to the notion of whether or not we're just calling, call a police, and the police would just issue a citation without anybody having actually gone there and, you know, firsthand inspected. gone there and, you know, firsthand inspected, you know, to see if it was loud. I mean, I know our department has, you know, they've been responding to calls, and that, and I think that would be intent, but we could look at making it explicit that that's required.
Well, it would have to be required before it could be enforceable. I mean, you couldn't, a court-appointed lawyer on his first day out of law school, I'd be able to get you off of that one.
Other than the hit of a civil penalty.
But civil penalties means you got to enforce them.
I totally agree.
And if you don't enforce them, then what happens? I strongly think that whatever direction we go, we think sports misdemeanor have it in the, in the court system rather than us trying to fine them and then what happens if they don't collect the fine? And then if you end up in court on somebody not paying a fine, you've got to prove they have the ability to pay, because you're saying they're in contempt of the court, that's got all kinds. The same problems that really flare up when you start talking about writing parking tickets, what happens when somebody wants to object, they want to have a hearing, how was it set up that way? You know, there's a, there's a whole different layer. This to me is a whole lot closer than we've ever been to having an ordinance that I personally could get behind. I mean, you know, we've got it presented to us this evening, we've got a new man here who's, you know, 15 minutes on the job. I'd like to see it posted on our website to give the public a chance to look at it as well and maybe be in position to take some action on it in January, because to me, this is a whole lot closer than we've ever been to something that I believe is workable.
I have a couple more questions too. We're defining nighttime as 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM?
Generally, yes.
Quiet time, quiet time.
Okay. And my last question is, what does this ordinance mean as it pertains to concerts like The Lazy Hiker? Will they require a permit to operate a band after 11:00 PM?
Yes. And there, I mean, you could get a permit, and there is a whole permitting structure here that works more or less, that's in 94.56, more or less the same as, as our parade and gathering type ordinance that has, that would permit permits on an occasional basis.
I don't think any of this is actually shutting anybody down. I think it gives us the heat to ask people to tone it down a little bit. That's all in the world, I think, we're asking. I don't think anybody's trying by this ordinance, which we debated, we're going on, I guess it's been about, what, two years now, somewhere in that neighborhood, so I don't think we're rushing into anything. Not this one. Not this one, but the noise problem we have debated and debated and debated. And we've got something I think that's workable here, that we give our police some, some power to have more than just a, would you please tone it down a little bit? Which is usually the first thing that they ask them, is just to tone it down, it's not to shut it off. It's never been asked. Chief, I don't know if y'all ever tell anybody to shut it off on the first two or three visits.
No, we have not. Well, just an example of, and actually Silva was mentioned in that, they, there's some growing themes with their use of this ordinance. You know, they had some local music venues and there was one real clear, in fact, it's to me not patently clear in the language that they have, whether or not the sound, that's one of the places I've got several options for it. Not patently obvious to me whether their definition of amplified music was meant to be just outside, it reads for like things outside, and an indoor club was complained about, complained about, and they ended up more or less shutting it down from music. So I hear what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, that we're trying to just tone down the things that are particularly problematic now, but it, we've got to try to look out for the cases we don't see right now. You know, there will be complaints that'll drive much more of a discussion.
And I agree, but I guess the question remains being, you start with something at some point, and if it doesn't work, you fix it.
Well, I do think you're close to having something, there are a number of options here that I think might merit some further discussion.
And I think I planned the bill, but we had, there's a whole different ordinance than this, I know, but they've wrestled with it, we've wrestled with it, we continue wrestling with it. We're looking at an ordinance here that says Hendersonville, we're looking at Silva, we don't know whether we're talking about civil or criminal enforcement of it. I mean, this is, this is getting a lot closer, but you think that we need to try to vote on this tonight, one person down, one person fresh on the board? We see this not even in the clean copy. I'm sorry, I'm not for that.
Well, I'm not surprised.
Well, that's fine. That's fine.
One of the noises that had, kept me awake a little bit in the last year was construction on the street. Now, that's a utility, but that was in the middle, it went on for hours during the night. And I understand that they, that was the only time they could work on it, so is there any provision for that?
There is, and if you look under 94.5, where it's on the third page, there are exceptions. So what's permitted is construction from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM weekdays, or 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM weekends.
So at 12 o'clock at night would not be allowed?
Be a violation.
So how would they go to the street then?
I don't know whether, we'd have to look at that, I don't know off the top of my head, but it might have to be a permit issue. But then that would at least limit, you know, be some notice, you might be able to...
Let people know.
Let people know, yeah.
But isn't that, but isn't that one of the exceptions? It's not...
There are certain hours, but I think, yeah, when they, they do tend to...
I see.
Can you walk me through the special permit? I mean, I understand we may not vote on this tonight, but let's say The Lazy Hiker wants to have a concert that goes on till 12:00. Do they need to come for us 30 days in advance? Do they need to talk summer? Who judges whether or not they get that permit?
So the permit's not going to come back here every time, and I just don't think that's, that's really practical at all.
I agree.
And so, like I said, this is, this is a fairly common method of dealing with this. And also, we already have some ordinances that work the same way as somebody's wanting to have a parade or, you know, a gathering out in the streets. There's a vetted way for them to go through the chief's office, the chief police, to issue a permit, that's what this one is. Now, how, I think it is intended to be on a sporadic kind of basis. I don't think there's anything that says you can't say, we're going to have a concert series and it's going to be this time, you know, all of these times.
You can get them all approved at one time, when you have a schedule.
I don't know that there'd be any problem with doing it.
What is to stop, let's say I want to have some pretty good parties that last until the night, chief police comes and I get a fine, but I just keep paying the fine, I just keep partying and keep paying the fine?
After three times you get a misdemeanor.
Okay, so it's not just not paying the fine gives you a misdemeanor, it's once you're in violation three times, you're...
If we refer to the general penalty that the town has for violation of its code of ordinances, which is, Counselor Collins makes some good points, and maybe not the easiest way to enforce that, but, and you can, you can say either or also. There are ordinances that say this is enforceable either as a civil fine or, you know, if the police want to go ahead and charge it as a misdemeanor, they have the latitude to do that. But even as it is, you can't just keep racking up fines forever and not have some criminal consequences.
I mean, paying the fines and everything, we're still talking three strikes, it's going to be a misdemeanor.
Well, no, what the ordinance says is failure to pay the fines, so you make a good point, I don't, if somebody just is paying it forever...
It's a good party to...
That's a pretty good party.
Yeah. We pass that.
I want to go to your...
When I go out here with the police, when I go by myself and weigh in on these things, basically, I don't see this ordinance having to be enforced unless it's somehow a complaint threat. When you start getting four or five calls from the same venue of what's going on, then you probably have a likely problem. But if you're just having a couple of parties and nobody's calling the police, and I don't see, but if we need to, we would have this. When we start getting a half dozen of calls more usually at 1:00 in the morning, or people are getting very, very drunk and they're trying to drive, we've got a public safety issue here as well. I'm not talking about a family reunion, I'm not talking about a neighborhood hit together, I'm talking about these bashes that take place. And I'd be happy to share your telephone numbers with the people to call me, and I'd be happy for you to go out here with the police and see how their hands are tied. We're not talking about little noisy birthday parties at all. We're talking about some serious stuff. I saw people dragged to their car the other night, 1:00 in the morning, dead drunk, music going wild. And I don't know that that's in the keeping with what Franklin's all about, but that's a personal issue with me. And I think what we can do, whatever it wants to tonight...
You know, I think it needs something clear, I mean, we, we have to have something to vote on that's to finish ordinance, don't you think?
I'm perfectly happy, we're running this up the flying pole and seeing if it works.
We don't know which one of these...
If we're going to do that, we'll need everybody to get your pens out, we're going to need to edit this. And I apologize, it's just there is variation in just what different communities in the area have done to address this, and I think it's worthy of consideration. I want, you know, you, this is your ordinance, so I, you know, I want y'all to have the choices that are out there and have a chance to think about what you think works best. So I apologize, I know this has been a problem, but I do, I think with one more month to come down to definitive version, you all have noted thoughts, you know?
It's important to get it right. I mean, I'm going to challenge the board, you've got a month to study it, and I mean to study it hard and come back with your recommendations, because I, I think at some point, we're either going to have to just quit worrying about it, or we're going to have to adopt something. I mean, two years?
I'd be willing to vote in January.
Okay, you'll all challenge ourselves to do this in January. And I agree with you 100% that we need to give our, our police some teeth, something they can act on. Personally, I like the idea of it being, I like the idea of having an officer go out and decide on his own, like, this is unreasonable or not, as opposed to decibel meters. I'm in favor of that. The 10, what was it, 1099? What could this represent violations? I personally thought that, the general penalty was a good idea. But I think we should lay it upon ourselves to be ready to vote on something as hard as we can to try to, by January. And try to facilitate that, I mean, let me suggest this, send me, call me, or send me your suggestions about, your thoughts about the, some summaries, sort of collect them, we'll also try to get an ordinance review committee, you know, group of staff here together and talk it over and try to come back to you with a proposed final...
That'd be good. Okay, got the marching orders. Okay, any further business? Want to go around the board before we get into the announcements? Okay, okay. Town and city luncheon will be December 15th, 12 o'clock at Tallulah Country Cafe, let me call that, what is it, Cafe? County...
Boiler room, that's a boiler room, though.
Yep, it is. Town offices will be closed December 25th, 26th and 27th, and, and these holidays are the same ones that state everybody else takes. Town hall offices will be closed Monday, January 1st in attendance a few years' day. And the next regular schedule, Lord Beanie will be Tuesday, January 2nd at 6:00. He sure he makes a dozen of that. I want you coming in here at 7:00.
You know what we mean, it shows up at 7:00.
All right, anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion and we adjourn. All in favor of adjournment? Okay? Thank you all.